We're reconvening from closed session at this time. Were there any actions taken in closed session, Chancellor?
There were no actions that need to be reported out.
Okay, thank you. I mean, we did take a lot of actions, but nothing that they need to be reported out. And now we have an invocation led by Trustee Jamal and followed by a pledge of allegiance led by me. Okay, thank you. Trustee Jamal?
All right, thank you. Just trying to get situated here. Just a few words. First, I'd like to note that February is Black History Month, so I think it's really important that we acknowledge the generations of African Americans who've struggled with adversity to achieve full citizenship in our country and who still face incidents of discrimination. We certainly have a lot of progress we need to make in this area. I'm also really sorry to hear and see what happened to the people in Texas, especially those who lost their lives due to the devastating winter weather and an unprepared electrical and water infrastructure. These have been heartbreaking scenes, I know for all of us. I am pleased to see there seems to be some light at the end of the tunnel on COVID-19. I know several people on this board, as well as in our district and across the county and the state are getting vaccinated. And I think let's just continue to remain vigilant. I think that if we continue to work together, staff, faculty, administration, students, as well as the board, we will emerge from this. And I think our collaboration so far, although it's been very challenging, I think especially for faculty and for students to make that transition. I think if we continue to do so in unity and with the perspective, we will get through this. IC Athletics is coming on board, coming up in the next couple of months. We will get through this, and we will be stronger for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance to the flag of our great nation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, both of you. Now, are there any public comments, Chancellor?
No, there are no public comments.
Now, our oral reports and speakers are limited to two minutes. And first, we start with board reports. So I'm starting with trustee, I'm doing it alphabetically and starting with trustee Tim Jamal. And so it's trustee Jamal, then trustee Whit Ridell, then trustee Inman, then trustee Jay, then trustee Pendergrass, and trustee Wright, and then me. So trustee Jamal, do you have a board report?
You know, in the interest of time, I will be swift. I will not do a board report. We are tardy. And I'd like to just move on with the meeting as planned. Thank you.
Okay, good thought. Trustee Whit Ridell, do you have a board report?
I have a report, and I just wanted to share, well, I have attended nine webinars or Zoom meetings this week or these last four weeks. And I just wanted to say the one that I attended that was most outstanding, on behalf of the California Community College Chancellor's Office, I joined, well, I, yes, I joined in a webinar with Scholars Network and campaigning for college opportunities as they highlighted the powerful voices of students. And those students have to be, the students were incarcerated. I watched that, and I have to say, it was probably the best webinar that I have attended in the last year. The students were sincere. I've often thought about the incarcerated, and I know through Human Services when I was chair, I have to say that some of our students were incarcerated and came to our classes. I do want to say that we need to give more attention to this. And that's it. We need to give more attention. Thank you.
Thank you. And trustee Inman?
I agree with trustee Whit Ridell. I've had some experience with the, with those programs of incarcerated people, and it's very moving what happens, and love to share that with you one day. My only sharing is that I went to two conferences. One was the three days before our self-evaluation. Then we had our self-evaluation. Then I did two days of legislation conference. And I didn't think of them as being, so six of seven days. And what that did was, if I could possibly be even more positive to faculty, but to faculty and students who are doing this, not maybe all day, like we were in those conferences, but it was really tiring. It was really difficult. So I just, it made me have even new respect for what our faculty and students are doing. And because it's hard to do. So that's all for now.
Yeah, thank you. We all have Zoom fatigue. Okay.
Right.
Trustee Jay?
I have two items to discuss this evening regarding happenings and future events. Details are included in the board agenda behind tab 7.3, but they are so important, they deserve emphasis here and attention of the entire district community. The first regards to IVC Fall to Spring Calling campaign. IVC was historically seen as 50% enrollment turnover rate for the fall to spring semesters. Dr. Martha McDonald, the IVC President for Student Services, wanted to incorporate a more proactive approach and implemented a program to contact students who were enrolled in classes in fall 2020 but were not yet registered in classes for spring 2021. During this past December and January, IVC staff attempted to call 3,000 students in this group and were able to contact about 1,000 of them. These calls were well-received and elicited many positive comments from students. Examples of the positive comments are in 7.3 in our board agenda. The call banking effort showed a potential positive effect in IVC's enrollment. Dr. Chris McDonald, Vice President for Instruction, reports "a significant reduction in the expected fall-to-spring enrollment decline" and attributes it much to the, much of it to the calling outreach effort. "A special round of thanks for the large cooperative effort by many people in the IVC community." This research, outreach, matriculation, counseling, DSPS, and EOPS. These were the ones that did the work on this. The second item I wanted to talk about, I wanted to bring to your attention, is IVC's Big Spring Fundraiser, celebrating excellence, to be held on Saturday, March 13. Some very clever planning went into making this event possible in the era of COVID. The event is in three parts. On Saturday, March 13, from 3:00 to 5:00, there will be a drive-through celebration at IVC with President Dr. John Hernandez, President of the IVC Foundation Lisa Greenberg, and Foundation Executive Director Alyssa Oransky greeting participants. The first 100 cars will receive a party in a box generously donated by Lisa and her husband. During this time, people who have ordered dinners from cater to turn-up rows will pick them up. Use the Jeffrey entrance by going into the Performing Arts Center. The other entrances will be closed. The second part is a silent auction, which will be held from Friday, March 5, through Saturday, through Sunday, the 14th. Included in this year's auction are trips without expiration dates, wine tasting, and custom-made suits, jewelry, and many other things. Finally, there will be a live stream event from 7:00 to 8:00 p.m. on March 13. I encourage you to tune in as it promises to be fun and engaging. I hope you will join me in supporting the students and programs at IVC by taking part in the celebration and making a contribution to the foundation. And many opportunities can be found through the link in 7.3 in this agenda. That's all.
Thanks. I got some great things at the Saddleback College Gala, so that's, I'm looking forward to that. Okay, the next, next person would be trustee Pendergast. Pendergast, I know your name, sorry.
No report.
Okay. And the next trustee, trustee Wright, do you have a report?
Yes, I do. I will try to keep as short as I can. On January 23, 2021, I attended the special meeting of the Board of Trustees that was, had from 9:00 to 3:00. It was a wonderful activity, and a lot was covered in that meeting. One of the things that we were shown was that a new bulletin was, a bulletin was put out. This is the first time it's happened in 10 years, but it's well done. One other thing I wanted to remind, we talked about for just a quick minute. We had a student at Saddleback College who had, who took the MedCap test, and she did a wonderful job. She scored an overall 524, which is the 100% percentile of the students who had taken the test. She took a number of courses at Saddleback College in biology, the chemistry, the anatomy, and the physiology, and written courses for two years. Professor Sam Abbas, who had Reha in several of the chemistry classes, shared. What an amazing accomplishment and testimony to that we do at Saddleback College over the particular in the math, science, and engineering division. A wonderful job. And finally, I completed my, as I report my, as I compliment, as I complete my report, I report that I have completed the entire vaccine, vaccination protocol, and I am immune against the COVID-19 pandemic. I had my last, I had my second vaccination on February 13, 2021. That's my report.
Great. I think as the former dean of math, science, and engineering at Saddleback College, you know what a superb department that is. And also, I've heard someone say that after they get their second vaccine, they feel like there's an invisible shield around them protecting them from COVID. So that's a good feeling. My report's just under two minutes. Our board leadership met with local legislators, Senator Dianne Feinstein, Congress members Katie Porter and Mike Levin, and we established a relationship with them. That's important before you ask for help. But that didn't stop us from asking for their help and their support. We asked for their support for adequate COVID Cares Act funding, DACA and international students, workforce and apprenticeship funding, student educational support, and help with working with the Navy for our ATEP project. They were very responsive and assured us of their commitment. And the meetings were a success, and we have follow-ups scheduled. The virtual accomplishments I attended, as trustee Inman attended, were the Effective Trustee and the Board Chair Workshop, the Legislative Conference, and President Stern's meeting with the college personnel. I was on Laguna Woods TV with Lisa Hart, and I plugged our Emeritus Institute classes and our fabulous free online arts productions. Since all of the clubhouse remains closed to the 20,000 bright energetic residents of Laguna Woods, they're grateful for the classes and grateful for these productions. I also took an IVC Latin Dance Master Class, which was very interesting and fun. And I've taken ballroom dancing at IVC, and it was good to learn a little bit more dancing. The Chancellor and the President's report and the agenda are filled with useful information. I recommend you reading them. Upcoming events, the IVC Club Day, or this Wednesday at 11:00. IVC, another master dance class series, March 5 at 7:00. And Saddleback College has a plethora of excellent productions that you could watch at your leisure at Saddleback Arts on the website, including the Feats of Life Extravaganza 220, my favorite production of all, the virtual award ceremony with incredible student talent, dance classes, and more. There's also a virtual art gallery on board now with artists, and there'll be a panel discussion on March 2. That's my report. Now, the student trustee, trustee Manifee, do you have a report?
Yes. So hello. Thank you all the trustees for your comments. They were all wonderful. So in the past month, I joined a student advisory board for Vice Mayor of Irvine, Tammy Kim. It was a collection of students from UCI and IVC mostly. We talked about student concerns and student issues such as housing, being the student water turnout, and also equality and inclusion. We're going to have some more meetings to see what the City Council and the Office of Media can do for IVC students and our students in the district. Besides that, I just hope everyone's doing well. I hope everyone's eligible, is getting vaccinated. Most of my family are eligible, so they all got vaccinated, and they're all doing very good. None of us having major symptoms. So yeah, just get vaccinated and stay safe. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, absolutely. Okay, next, the Associate Student Government Report. So that would be Adam Brownell from Saddleback, then Brianna Ross from IVC. There's Brianna. Okay.
Hi, I'll go first then. So not too much going on, but we are planning for our spring election. So all the executive positions and 10 of the senator positions will be up for grabs. We just finished our first orientation for the candidates today. I think we had over 34 applicants and 16 positions available. So it'll be pretty competitive, but I'm excited to see how that works out. And of course, I'm excited to onboard my successor, whoever that will be. And like Ethan said, I am also on this Irvine City Council Student Advisory Board. And I think it's, one of the really great things about it is that there is an overwhelming amount of IVC student representation because there's one representative for each of the colleges in the area, and then also a general student application. And a lot of IVC students are there. I believe seven of us are there, and there's about 12 other student representatives. So lots, it's good to see IVC coming out and being in the community and getting involved with local affairs like that. That's all for me, though. Thank you.
Thank you. That's great. And that's great for the, that the city council is having students work there. That's great. Is Adam Brownell there? I don't think he was, he wasn't feeling well last time.
No, I don't see him on, and I don't see.
Hope he's doing okay.
Everybody else.
Okay, Irvine Valley College Academic Senate, June McLaughlin.
Quick report from IVC faculty, just two items. And the first one, a great example of effective and respectful civil discourse by two groups on campus who approach remote learning from diametrically opposed perspectives. ASIVC student representatives participated with the IVC Faculty Senate last week in a robust and meaningful conversation surrounding potential and actual fraudulent work submitted by students and the efforts by faculty, by IVC faculty to address these issues and the way faculty have been addressing them, such as monitoring software like Proctorio, requirements of additional camera use during exams, and additional policies in syllabi. The student representatives from ASIV, and we share all these troubles with everybody who's currently involved in remote learning. Student representatives from ASIVC gave context to faculty concerns by providing their experiences and their constituents' experiences with unsupported, about unsupported claims of fraudulent work, changes in syllabi requiring harsher, more strict policies, and how these detrimentally affected IVC students. This incredibly helpful and respectful discourse, it was amazing to watch, but it demands that I give a big shout out to those student reps. So shout out to IVC students who represent IVC students at IVC Senate. Ayesha Ahmed, D'Angelo Hunter, Franz Kiviet, Apurva Gunti, Alicia Hugh, and Ibrahim Hussain. And I'd also like to thank Brianna Ross for her leadership. I think that has a lot to do with these students. The second thing I want to mention quickly is that the State Academic Senate for the California Community Colleges is asking for a diversity, equity, and inclusion survey to be completed by local senates. It is not, the due date is not till the end of March, but we are working on it now. And I very much want to share that with the board. It is essentially a gap analysis, a general gap analysis, looking from the faculty perspective of what's happening in DEI at IVC. That is it. Thank you.
Thank you. Interesting. Okay, Professor Stevens from Saddleback.
All right, good evening, everybody. Good evening, trustees and Chancellor Burke. We're working on our fall class schedules, constructing them, with the target of 50% of class sections back on campus in 2021 fall. And it's a big challenge for so many reasons. The biggest one is student safety. We're worried about our students' mental health, about their success in online classes. Some of our students are high-risk, either through age or health issues. I have several students with COVID right now in Zoom classes. And I don't want to say they look like cat food warmed over, but some of them look like cat food warmed over. It's obvious how severe this illness can be for some people. So my heart goes out to them, and then I worry about in the fall, as we come back, do we know what we're really facing? So the vaccines are looking promising. I'm looking forward to getting mine when the educators get them. But we're worried, are there going to be requirements for masks in the fall? Social distancing? Are there going to be COVID variants? What happens to class sizes? The need to potentially offer multimedia instruction. I'm planning to offer my classes on campus, but also on a Zoom camera to potentially reach students who are staying at home or who are distant. With that goes concerns for all of our faculty, for our staff and our administrators' health. I think of the ripple effect of 17,000 students coming on campus, potentially taking an illness home with them to, say, five or six family members and friends. And the ripple effect from just college goes out to 100,000-plus people. So concerns about that. I want to thank our faculty association for working with district administrators, crafting an MOU for what the fall will look like. There's going to be huge dedication required again from faculty and administrators and staff to pivot to multimedia, back on campus, maybe back on campus, back not on campus. We really don't know at this point. So it's pretty interesting to build a schedule that looks at all of that. So I would say trepidation and excitement. I think we're all anxious to come back and see our students face to face. Encourage them, kind of pull them out of those Zoom doldrums that some of them have fallen into, and just move forward with student success. So that's what we're looking at right now at the college. I thought I would update you on that. Thank you very much. Stay safe.
Yeah, thanks for the update. And Professor Louis Long?
Thank you, President Milchiker. Although the effect, although the effect isn't quite as impressive in the virtual environment of a Zoom webinar, on behalf of the many faculty who are attending this meeting virtually out there, I would like to welcome trustee Carolyn Inman to the board and express our gratitude that someone with her level of experience and knowledge in the community college system and state legislation related to the community college system is on our board. I'd also further like to express our support for the faculty negotiating team as they represent the faculty in its negotiations for a new contract. I think it's especially important that the faculty, that the, that the board recognize the faculty's interest in promoting the welfare of our part-time colleagues. Our part-time colleagues teach almost half of the classes on campus, and yet at the same time are paid little more than half of the same salary, despite the fact that they have the same qualifications and the same obligations as the full-time faculty. And on top of that, they're expected to build some sort of livelihood out of very poor compensation. We're in a unique position in this district to, because of our basic aid status, we're in a unique position in this district to make a huge difference in how part-time faculty members are treated in our region and throughout the state. And I think the board has a unique opportunity this time during this negotiation, one that may never happen again in the same way, to help our part-time colleagues achieve the professional recognition and the corresponding compensation that that recognition deserves. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Professor Long. You finished?
Yes, thanks.
Next, we have the Irvine Valley College Classified Senate and Amy Hunter. And I am so delighted that you're going to be our Classified Employee of the Year, Amy. I don't know anybody that deserves it more than you do, so I'm just.
Oh, my goodness. Thank you for that recognition. That's amazing. Thank you so much. So tonight, good evening. Since our last meeting in January, our classified have been involved in several activities as we move forward with our spring semester. Continue to be engaged and involved on our campus in participatory governance committees across the campus and district-wide. Our classified are very involved in our student success. I'm very excited to see how involved they are, reviewing the upcoming student scholarship applications involved in our fundraising efforts on March 13, on-ground student support drive-through, and much more. Irvine Valley College Classified will be represented with the IABC National Carrying Campus Initiative as the classified liaison representative had a pleasure to interview with the founder of Carrying Campus on February 8 for their new national website. That will be posted soon. And just a shout out to our Committee for Carrying Campus at Irvine Valley College for all of their extraordinary work on our internal contact guide and FAQ sheet. And in the area of professional development, we continue to create training opportunities that will help our classified develop, help our ability to support the entire college community.
Okay, thank you. I love Carrying Campus, okay. And next, Saddleback College Classified Senate, Darren England. You here?
No, he's not in attendance.
Okay. And then the California School Employee Association, Scott Ferguson-Green.
Thank you, board. I wanted to thank the Board of Trustees in advance for the opportunity to be able to negotiate a new collective bargaining agreement, and we look forward to that. With February being designated as Black History Month, I wanted to relay a connection of a guest that appeared at Saddleback College over 10 years ago. That guest was producer-director Casey Lemmons. She is part of only 4% of female directors in Hollywood. That number should be way up. She was a guest speaker in Professor Julia Brady Jenner's Women in Film class, and that was soon after she directed the film Eased By You. And almost two years ago, she directed the film Harriet, which was the story of Harriet Tubman. I was president at that premiere, and I got to catch up with Ms. Lemmons for the first time since we had lunch over a decade ago. When she was a guest at Saddleback College, she made quite an impact. We really appreciated that Professor Julia Brady Jenner invited her. We appreciated the fact that President Milchiker was present at that presentation. We were very much inspired, and many students were inspired enough that they actually went in that direction of entertainment as a career because of her appearance. This week on PBS, she is a guest on the award-winning show Finding Your Roots, hosted by the esteemed Harvard professor and historian, Dr. Henry Louis Gates, as the history of her family is explored. And we feel very privileged to have had Casey Lemmons as a guest, as an advocate for women and Black history. Thank you.
Thank you. That's a great show, Finding Your Roots. I enjoy it. Thank you. Now, the Police Officer Association, Beau Arbuthnot.
Not in attendance.
Okay, so those are the reports, and now we're going to the presentations. We have three presentations, and only one we're going to take action on. And the first one. And the first one is the presentation for federal and state legislative priorities. So I think, is Letitia Clark going to lead this discussion?
Oh, yeah.
Letitia Clark was the District Director of Public Affairs and Government Relations, is in charge of this area in our district.
Hi, everyone. President Milchiker, Honorable Trustees. It's an honor to be with you this evening. And it's, it's no introduction to you, our federal and state legislative representatives. As you know, the legislative session is among us. We are in the midst of it. And we have our representatives to let us know deadlines, how we can participate in the legislative session in this season, and then also kind of outline priorities that we have, not only normally, but as it's been shaped by COVID. And so I think it's really important that you hear the presentations. And I know you heard from them just a few months ago, but, you know, kind of gearing into 2021. And we've already had some activity, as some of the board reported on already. But we're hoping to have much more activity throughout the year. And just wanted to get your buy-in on the several priorities that we've outlined for your consideration and approval. And of course, after their presentations, we'll have the opportunity to add to those priorities or remove some. But, you know, this is under your leadership, of course. So I think first, are we starting with federal? We want to be sensitive of Dana's time. She's on the, the East Coast, so it's fairly late for her. So I think we're going to start with Dana.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to be with you again and to present. It's always a pleasure to come to you and to discuss the things we're working on for your behalf and to get further guidance. We have, everyone, I think, kind of knows who we are. We work as your liaison with Congress, the federal agencies and the administration. We research programs. We understand requirements and agency priorities, and we troubleshoot issues. Most recently, we worked with the colleges on an issue regarding COVID reporting, where the requirements were different than what it was when we received the funding. And so working with our congressional members and our senate offices, we got an extension of one week for not only us, but for everyone to submit. And additionally, the Department of Ed set up a, a helpline to help colleges understand these new requirements and how to pull data that wasn't readily available through regular track data. And we build relationships, which we've started to do since members and, and of your board and of your campuses aren't able to do meetings. We've started by doing some Zoom meetings. We held meetings with Representative Katie Porter, Representative Levin, and with staff for Senator Feinstein. We've, we've requested meetings with Senator Padilla and with Representative Steele. So we're still working. We'll start with some other issues as well, too. We work with grants. We examine, track, and recommend positions on legislation. We will be sending out a first legislative tracker on legislation we're tracking on your behalf and make some recommendations for maybe letters of support or engagement. One thing that we've already done is, is legislation that we supported last time, we've, we've been reaching out to offices to find out what are their plans to reintroduce and how we can be helpful. So our goal is really to have the district as a resource and someone who's widely respected as using best practices and being innovative in our approach. The next slide. Our federal legislative priorities, which of course are always fluid, and we look forward to continued feedback from you, are DACA and international students, workforce for the 21st century, for, for workforce training, apprenticeship and other programs to retrain our workforce. The Higher Education Act reauthorization, Veterans Affairs are always a very high priority. And apprenticeship, work-study, things to give students real hands-on experience to help them in their job search, because if they graduate and don't have a job, we fully understand that, that we've missed the mark. The next slide, current activities. We've been very engaged on COVID-19 support, dealing with headcount for funding distribution versus a per student, a, a F T E. We've been working on ATEP property development to be able to move the line to get the Navy to allow us to develop 12 additional acres so that we can really make that land usable. Student Veteran Services, grants for Hispanic serving, Annapese work-study, future scholars in STEM. And one grant that I'm going to take another look at is there is funding for incarcerated students or students who have been incarcerated. So that may be something we want to look at, given that two board members mentioned that. I'll for sure just take a look and let you know what's out there. We, we track legislation. The issues that we're really following deal with COVID-19 Student Support Services, Veterans Pell, Grand Expansion, Student Financial Aid, SALT, DACA, Job Training, H A. That's the Higher Education Act, I'm sorry, Veterans. And there, there've been a real push towards mental health and dealing with housing and other stability issues for students, as well as free community college or loan forgiveness. We work really hard and are committed to helping to build the relationships. As we talked about, we just set off a variety of, of meetings, and we're already following up with the staff on them, on these issues. This, currently, the district is the lead for the Orange County Community College Legislative Task Force. And as such, we're supporting the federal role in that. We've been active in COVID-19 support, especially the U C I liability issue. We worked, and it wasn't real, even though it wasn't really a federal issue, we engaged and, and several members, including reporter Levin and Correa, were very active. And although we didn't get everything we wanted, we did get a little bit, which is better than nothing. But importantly, I think it was really good in, in really re-establishing stronger relationships. We've been active in the international student visa issues when the Trump administration wanted to limit the ability of our international students to be in person. We were very active. Both campuses were very supportive, as was the task force. We sent some letters, and the, the provision was ultimately withdrawn. However, our members used our information on their websites and stuff. So we were really seen as a leader in that. Federal limitations on gender race training, I think with the new administration, that is very different. The focus is more on equity and inclusion and anti-poverty. And we're also talking about best practices and first responder training. Those are some of the issues, and those are emerging. The task force is very fortunate to have Representative Young Kim at our, at in our next meeting and to support that effort. We drafted draft talking points and, and background information for the task force to consider. And that was forwarded today's Monday on Friday. And then looking ahead, um, one thing that, that at the next slide, the next, one thing I want to mention is that the Biden administration is readily moving forward with appointments. And community colleges are really at the heart of much of education. The chief of staff for the Department of Education is a former Jill Biden staffer. We have the, the, an appointment of James Cavell for Undersecretary of Education was just announced today, the nomination. And he had been, he is the current president of the Institution for College Access and Success. There was, there's, there's, the community colleges have been called by Nancy Pelosi, the Engines of Opportunity. There, there really is a renewed interest in community colleges, as there should be. Some of the provisions that the administration is talking about is free tuition for community colleges, competitive grants that we can apply for, for completion efforts, which I know has always been a focus in, in the district. There's going to be a new round of TAC grants. What Saddleback College successfully got was one of the grantees that was showcased in the past for the nursing program. There's going to be supposedly an expansion of Pell. And there's, could be money, money to support technology and approved facilities. So I think that community colleges are going to have a really important role. And this is why we're really starting to raise our profile early and often. FY22, let me just touch base on the budget. So the budget is going to be delayed this year. There's a skinny budget supposedly being released next week. With the full budget may not come to May, which is really the latest in history. So things are going to be moving a little bit slowly this year. The State of the Union, which was originally scheduled for tomorrow, has slid to sometime in March. So the focus is on the stimulus, which the House, I believe, is supposed to vote on it tomorrow. It's being moved through a process called reconciliation, which is going to be done as, as the board members who participated in our meeting with Rep Levin know, three times in the next three years, essentially once per fiscal year. And using that method, it requires just a simple majority, and there's more stringent rules to make changes. And, and so basically, all the appropriations committees have their own bills. Then they package it into one and move it where Camila Harris could potentially cast the deciding vote. They expect that to pass within the next three weeks, which I think is pretty ambitious, but that's part of the reason the State of the Union has been denied. That includes, of course, COVID-19 emergency funding, which in the $1.9 trillion stimulus is $40 billion for higher ed, which can be, half of which will need to be used to support students in emergency grants. But the other half is, is more flexible, but will want to pay careful, careful attention to parameters of reporting. The Secretary of Education nominee, Miguel Cardona, is expected to have a full vote this week, so we're waiting on that. And Secretary of Labor Marty Walsh is not far behind. Apprentices, apprenticeships are going to continue to be a big push. They are going to change them from the I R A P, where they use the industry groups, and do more support of, you know, through colleges and different types of tracks to move them forward. They're going to be following the Obama era. The focus is going to be on job training, broadband, internet access. So I think that we should really be, be focused on the, on our career tracks, job training, like we always are, but also K through 12 partnerships are going to, and pathways are going to be increasingly important. The H, the Higher Education Act reauthorization, we see that moving very slowly. That's probably not going to happen this year. As I said, the FY22 budget cycle is, is going to be delayed. And other than that, the congressional schedule is a regular schedule. It doesn't look much different than normal. The big difference is that much of it is going to be in Zoom. I think that's about it, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Are there any questions from the board members? I don't think so. That was, that was certainly.
I have my hand up.
Okay, sorry, I didn't see it. Trustee.
I had to keep Dana up a little bit longer. So Dana, thank you for the presentation. And thank you for setting up the meetings with Congressman Levin and Congresswoman Porter. I think they were really productive, and hopefully we'll see some results on a few of the issues, especially the ATEP issue. My, I had a general question for you. I know you've summarized a lot of the issues here, and I really appreciate it. Can you just say, of course, without being partisan, have the opportunities changed for community colleges in the district going forward with this new administration and new Congress versus the prior administration in that Congress? And what would be, what are, I know you've outlined them here, but what are the, and what are the headlines? So what are our real opportunities here for us going forward? And by the way, I kind of chuckled a little when you talked about budgets in Washington, because they don't really matter, because we just print money. So, you know, budgets mean something in Sacramento, because they get their pay cut if, and if they don't pass a balanced budget. But, but anyway. Yeah, if you could just highlight the comparison and the opportunities between the last Congress, last administration, and going forward, are they better for us overall in terms of opportunities to strengthen community colleges? Worse or the same?
I think they're going to be much better. I think an important component is Jill Biden. She's still teaching community college, and she really is inserting herself and is going to be a driver. I think it's written all over the Department of Education already. And many of the priorities are going to come from the Obama administration, the Obama-Biden administration. And they're going to bring back, but what, one big difference in the Trump administration is there were actually very few, that many of the competitive opportunities were eliminated. And they did funding through more like partnerships, through the industry-based groups. They were the drivers on it. In this administration, I expect to see community colleges be a driver of much of this with things like the TAC grant. The TAC grant is a really flexible program that allowed Saddleback College to get several million dollars for its nursing program. And it pays for creation of, of the, 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 not the books, but, but the curriculum and, and the training. And it can have some funds for different types of equipment and stipends. It was a really flexible grant to be able to start programs that otherwise we might be not, might not be able to start. So I think we're going to see many more grant opportunities. And there is going to be a focus on completion, because completion, as we know, is all about equity. And so we have seen that many of the students who have the higher needs, who may not be able to be full-time students, take longer to graduate. I think there are going to be programs to really support these students and these student needs. I think this is going to be a good time for opportunity for us. I'm, I'm very hopeful in what's coming down the pipe. And the focus, especially on community colleges, lots of times, community colleges were not even included in funding opportunities. But I think we're going to see it differently, and I think in others, we're going to see community college partnerships required.
Yeah, and I, thanks for that. And I saw that the I R A P apprenticeship program has been discontinued. Is that, is that true?
It is true, because that was an industry-based program. It was like the Restaurant Association was basically the grantee. It's going to be more through, like it was before, through community colleges.
I think, and trustee, trustee Manifee has a, has a question. Trustee Manifee?
Yes. I wanted to know if you have any plans to support or if you have any updates on the Equality Act? I think our district has continuously been putting more emphasis on diversity, equity, and inclusion. And we've definitely been a leader in focusing more on inclusion. So I want to know if we, you have any plans to support that or if there's any update on that?
I think the board is fully promoting and discussing equity and inclusion. It has been included in our conversations. And it is something that is really resonating with the types of things that they're doing and looking at. And we're, we're positioning the board as someone, as the district, as someone to use as a resource. And I think that in the past, like Senator Feinstein or other members, when they needed input, has called on us for input, and I fully expect that to happen again. when they needed input, has called on us for input and I fully expect that to happen again.
But it's not like a priority in our, basically in our agenda, right?
I think it is a priority. I think we've been, we've talked about, I think there were maybe four or five things we've talked about and that was one of them that are, I think it's a high priority. And, and the board, correct me if I'm, I, if I'm overstating or wrong. They, they know better what their priorities. I know from a federal perspective, it's one of a handful of issues that we've been talking about.
I wouldn't trust you. I would just add that this is our opportunity today to kind of weigh in from what you heard. And if the board agrees that we should definitely have equity and inclusion listed, then it allows us to look at the different acts and pieces of legislation that embody working on equity and inclusion and then we can present them to you to either support or oppose based on what the language is. So, um.
Yeah.
Some of the things we focused on, I don't think that will be an issue.
Sounds good. Um, are like other trustees have any comments on the Equality Act? Or if they want to, uh, if they want to likely get supporting it more or not?
I think we should support it more. Do any other trustees?
Trustee Manifee, I, I really believe that um the state, what comes down from California Community College Chancellor, that Chancellor's office and what they ask us to do and what, how they are um educating faculty and the webinars that I have attended, um, we're setting a strong foundation. Um, I do believe it is a priority. I really do. And it's, um, you know, the handouts that I get, I look at them and it, it, it's just written a little bit different, but it's the same thing and that's important that you're teaching the same focus. And that's what's strong. So do I think that we're part of that? Yes, we are. We really are. Rest assured.
Yeah, absolutely. Our board is and, and the whole state is. You're right. So I, I think it's important to, to all of us.
Yes. All right. No, that's good to me. Uh, I just want to make sure, like, put that out there because I just think it's ridiculous. Like in twenty twenty-one, um, our LGBTQ students can be denied like a COVID nineteen vaccine or a COVID nineteen test just because they're LGBTQ or um they can be discriminated against in housing or um public services. So, um, yeah, that's great. I just wanted to mention that. All right. Thank you.
I just wanna.
That stuff is illegal. I would think it's illegal to, anyway, go, go ahead. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Can I add something? There is some legislation and we'll be sure to forward it with, on the legislation Excel that actually addresses your very point about the LBGQ rights and the discrimination and, and it, it, it further supports the kind of things that you're talking about. So we'll include that on our, on our legislation Excel that we send over.
All right. Thank you.
I also, as I mentioned in my board report, thought there are three meetings with the legislators, you know, virtual meetings were, were, were just about as um productive as any of the meetings I've had with legislators before. Usually you just kind of say hello and you talk to them and you, you know, you tell about your colleges and everything and, but these were really productive and they wrote down everything we asked and they said they'd work with each other to get it done and I, I was impressed. So I think we need to keep following up on that. That's great.
Yeah, absolutely. Yep.
Yeah. Okay, Dana, is there anything else or any other trustee have any other questions? Okay, thanks so much. You can go to bed. I know it's three hours later in Washington DC, so thank you so much for your. Thank you. And now, now we're going to our state representative, which is Dale Shumaski? I'm sorry, Shumasaki, sorry. I, I know I practiced it, but I wasn't quite ready. Thank you. Um, so you're talking about the state legislative update. This is our state legislators. Thank you.
Good evening. Um, I'll do the first part of the presentation and David will do the second part. So, um, let's go to the next slide. Uh, let me first talk about the legislative process and the calendar. When the legislature um met to organize the session back in December, it was their intention to have a, a regular session as much as possible. But uh, given the spike in cases under COVID nineteen, they delayed their return to session in January by one week. So that's why you see the cross out from the January fourth to the January eleventh uh opening of the session. Uh, we are at a point now where last Friday, all the bills um of, were submitted for uh to meet the legislative deadline of February nineteenth. And within that regard, um, the legislature uh has a fifty bill limit for a two-year session. Um, and for this first year of the session, uh, there have been one thousand five hundred and sixty bills submitted in the assembly. There's eight hundred and nine bills submitted in the Senate, so that's a total of two thousand three hundred and sixty-nine bills that have been submitted for this first year of session. Um, not all of them will be heard and actually moved through the session for a variety of reasons, but uh, and then those bills do not include resolutions and um other kinds of activities such as the Joint Legislative Audit Committee, which here is audit requests. Uh, but uh, between now and um April thirtieth, there will be hearings to try to get the bills out out of the commit, the policy committees and into the fiscal committees. Uh, next slide. So uh, because of the COVID nineteen process or excuse me, because of COVID nineteen pandemic, uh, the legislatures has been forced to consolidate their uh schedule. And um, let's see, and in that process, um, of the uh, uh, what they decided is to have accelerated uh the number of budget committees heard at the beginning of uh this month and then they will stop in March and April and then they will resume hearings in May. So for, as you see here in the assembly, they had informational hearings on February ninth of the governor's budget proposals on the Student Aid Commission. On February twenty-third uh in the assembly tomorrow, they will hear, have an informational hearing on community colleges. Again, no hearings in March and April and then they will finish up hearings in May. For these informational hearings, there are no votes. They won't take any votes, um, and they haven't taken any votes, but they, they will not uh take actions. They're just hearing um what the governor's proposals uh look like and they're not taking any actions until they get revised estimates on revenues in May. Uh, similarly, in the Senate Subcommittee on Education, um, they will have, um, they had an informational hearing on February seventeenth in the community colleges, followed by a Student Aid Commission hearing for the twenty-fourth, uh, again, on informational items only. Again, no hearings in March and April for the Senate and then they will come back in May where they will uh hear the May revision uh to the budget and they will actually take votes uh at that time. Next slide. Let's see, we're missing, yeah, here we go. Um, be, again, because of the COVID nineteen crisis, they're consolidating the number of hearings. In the Assembly Higher Education Committee, uh, they usually have uh five or six hearings. Uh, but because of, they have to have social distancing in the legislature, there's only one or two committee rooms that they actually use to hear um um committee bills and be, and be safe socially distant. So, um, uh, so in the assembly, so what that means is because there are uh some seventeen or eighteen different committees in, in each house that they can only have a fixed number of hearings. So the Higher Ed Committee, they will only have two hearings, where they usually have five or six hearings. So the hearings, uh, Policy Committee bills will be April eighth and April twenty-second. Um, this gives, because they're doing it in this manner, this gives a lot of power to the committee chairs um and to the committee staff on which bills to hear and which bills not to hear. Uh, in a normal session, they would try to hear as many bills as possible that are related um to the higher education subject matter. But because there's only two hearings, that there'll be a lot of bills that won't be heard uh this legislation, legislative session. Um, in addition, because there are eighty members in the assembly, uh, a decision's been made that only twelve of the members' bills will actually uh be uh sent over to the Senate uh for deliberation. Uh, the assembly hasn't decided how they're gonna ration those bills. If the member will have his or her choice on which twelve bills to send over or if the Appropriations Committee will win or down the number of bills uh to um send over to the Senate. Um, conversely, the Senate Education Committee, because they have only forty members, they have a little bit more flexibility to hear uh and conduct hearings. Um, so they are having a comparatively more normal um uh bill hearing schedule. There's gonna be six hearings heard. Uh, the other difference is the Senate Education Committee hears both uh K twelve and higher education bills. So um they have a little bit more coverage of a wider span of subject matters. Now, there, the other distinction is because, again, the Senate doesn't have as many members, they might be able to send more bills over to, to the assembly for deliberation as uh, as compared to the assembly members. Uh, you've been hearing probably a lot about the governor's recall and so I wanted to give you an update uh what is happening on the, the recall election. So if we go to the uh next, next slide. So there's been fifty-five attempts to recall a sitting governor. Um, there's only been one recall that actually succeeded. That was in two thousand three against Gray Davis. Um, in that recall uh process, the Republican candidate Arnold Schwarzenegger was chosen to replace Governor Gray Davis. Uh, he want, he uh secured um the election with forty-eight point six percent of the vote. And this is an important thing to note because in a recall election, you do not need a majority or fifty plus one to win a recall election. All you need is the plurality in that election. And um, and as, as you may know, that in a recall uh election, there are two questions you have to vote for. One is uh on a majority vote, do you vote yes or no to recall the sitting governor? And then on the second vote, you vote for whoever is the replacement uh and that person uh wins by, again, by a plurality. Uh, it's worth noting that in two thousand three, there were a hundred and thirty-six candidates who were on the recall ballot. There were additional ca, uh eighteen candidates that received write-in votes. Next slide. So um, in the state constitution, uh, there's, there's a process on how many signatures are required, required to qualify for recall. You take twelve percent of the, of the uh last election for, of voters for that election for that particular office. So for the, for the governor's recall, they look at the number of voters that voted in the governor's uh race and then they multiply that by twelve percent and then that's uh the number of signatures that are required to put the recall uh election on the ballot. Um, the deadline to submit the signatures to the Secretary of State is March seventeen. The original deadline, it should be noted, was uh November seventeenth, but the petitioners uh went to court uh and asked to extend the deadline due to the COVID nineteen uh pandemic and they were granted an extension of an additional five months to uh uh to collect signatures for the recall election. Uh, once the recall election qualifies, the election must take place sixty to eighty days from the date at which the Secretary of State uh certifies the recall election. So uh, the, uh, as uh, uh, signatures have been submitted, the Secretary of State has been counting the number of signatures. Uh, but uh after the uh, the count is certified, uh, there, there is between sixty and eighty days at which the secretary uh, after which the uh, the election can be uh, uh, recall, could be taking, taking place. The next slide. So uh, right now, the number of signatures that are required to qualify for uh the recall is about one point five million signatures. Uh, there have been about seven hundred thousand plus signatures uh that were submitted. Um, this was uh the verified signature list as of January twenty-first. Uh, eighty-four percent of the signatures were valid. The updated number uh from last week is that they're up to about six hundred thousand signatures, which have been uh validated uh for the, for the campaign. They, the signature gatherers or the petitioners have reported they have about one point six million signatures and that's an update from this February third total. So um, if, if that is uh the basis of, of which the um uh signatures have been submitted, it looks like that this um uh, this uh petition may, may very well qualify for, for a future ballot. And again, the Secretary of State is counting the signatures as they, they keep coming in. Uh, next slide. Uh, so this brings you to, you know, if the recall qualifies, qualifies for the ballot, uh, what are the chances of the recall being successful? Uh, we have two polls that were taken at the end of January and they were released a couple of weeks ago. Um, the Berkeley Institute for Governmental Studies poll shows that Gavin Newsom on their poll showed uh forty-six approval, forty-six percent approval rating, which is down from sixty-four percent in September. Uh, on that poll, they asked, would you vote to recall Governor Newsom? At that time, uh, again, this was taken at the end of January, thirty-six percent said they would vote to recall and forty-five percent would not vote to recall. Uh, thirty-one percent in that poll rated the governor's pandemic, pandemic efforts as being good or excellent. And that was down from forty-nine percent in September. Uh, the Public Policy Institute of California had a similar poll taken. Uh, the governor had a fifty-two percent approval rating. Uh, again, that was down from the approval rating that the governor received in May. It was an identical number to the PPIC poll of sixty-four percent. Uh, the PPIC poll did not ask a question related to the recall. But they did ask a question about uh his management of the pandemic and in that poll, fifty percent uh expressed approval of the governor's management of the pandemic, forty-seven percent uh expressed disapproval. Next slide. So to date, um, there have been uh a number of individuals have expressed that they will be, appear on the ballot uh should the recall measure appear. Um, here, you see uh all the individuals. Uh, John Cox, a Republican businessman and he ran for uh fourth governor against Newsom in two thousand eighteen. Mike Cernovich, uh, an independent who's a social media personality. Uh, Kevin Falconer, the former mayor of San Diego. Uh, John Morlock from the Orange County area, in your area, is a former state senator, has expressed interest uh of running as a recall candidate as well. To date, no Democrats have uh declared uh for, to participate in the recall uh election. Next. Um, I mentioned earlier about the deadline for submitting bills. Uh, on Friday, we are still going through the twenty-three or twenty-four hundred uh different measures um that uh have been introduced. And we are scrolling through them and in our next report, we'll have a more detailed list of bills of interest that affect the community college system and that might be of interest to your district. Um, but we did find a few that we just wanted to make you aware of. Um, and we can show you on the next slide. So broadband uh access is a big topic this year. Uh, Assembly Member Aggie R. Curry introduced this bill last year, requiring the Public Utilities Commission to provide grants for um for different entities uh to uh provide broadband access. The Aggie R. Curry measure, um, among other entities, includes community colleges as the list of entities that comply for a broadband grant. Uh, there's a, there's a competing measure that was also introduced last year, SB four by Lena Gonzalez, uh, to have a grant program that was sponsored by the Public Utilities Commission. But in her measure, she does not include the community colleges. Um, there's also AB thirty-four by Assembly Member Murasuki, which is a, a broadband grant um to provide a, a state general obligation bond to provide broadband access to underserved and unserved communities. Uh, it doesn't have a, a dollar specified, but should that pass, it would go on the general election ballot for um, uh, November uh, uh, twenty twenty-four, excuse me, twenty twenty-two. Um, another bill that may be of interest to the, to you folks is AB one oh two by Assembly Member Chris Holden from the Pasadena area uh for the College and Career Access Pathway Partnerships or the Dual Enrollment Program. Uh, there's the current sunset date of twenty twenty-seven. Mr. Holden, who created uh the, uh, the revamped version of dual enrollment programs, wants the sunset removed so that there isn't any uncertainty about uh the program. so that there isn't any uncertainty about the program's future after the sunset date is reached. AB two ninety-nine by Assemblymember Villa Padua, who's a freshman member from the Stockton area, is a measure that provides supplemental grants to needy students for community college-approved apprenticeships programs that could very well dovetail into any federal initiatives that are being planned. In addition, there's SB sixty-one by Senator Hurtado, who, per measure, requires the California Workforce Development Board to provide fifty million dollars in grants to provide support services to to participants in training programs composed and they're consortia composed of local workforce development boards, community colleges, and other stakeholders to access those funds. So we've gone next slide. David, Devin and my staff will go through some of the suggested priorities for you folks to consider for this upcoming legislative session.
So first and foremost, to give a little bit of context to some of the asks in this upcoming section, there has been a significant influx of one-time revenues in the anticipated state budget. This has been reported by both the Department of Finance and the Legislative Analyst Office in the recent weeks, as well as going into the beginning of the fiscal year. A lot of this funding is on top of the anticipated additional stimulus funding from this most recent round, as well as any additional stimulus funding from anything upcoming at the federal level. So given that context, a lot of the one-time available funding at the community college level, specifically through Prop ninety-eight, as well as any additional one-time funding, we are looking to try and secure some of those additional unrestricted funds that are not tied to the cost of living adjustments for the apportionments. Those would include block grants or any per FTE programmatic funding. And we also are looking to ensure that those do not impose any other requirements on the COLA funds. So as a condition for receiving the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two COLA funds, districts have to submit a plan pursuant to the Vision for Success from the Chancellor's Office to reduce equity gaps by forty percent in twenty twenty-three and fully close those equity gaps by twenty twenty-seven. So another of the priorities is to expand eligibility of the California College Promise Program. Currently, the California College Promise Program serves only the first-time, first-generation students. It as well does not serve any of the part-time students. However, many students are unable to participate due to a variety of reasons, either their family status at the moment, whether they are single parents, parents staying at home supervised during distance learning, older adults working to provide income to their families, students that have returned after a lapse in amount of time, either out of high school or taking a break in their college education. As well, the California Promise Program needs to adapt to the changing demographics and needs of the student population. As we have seen, especially during the pandemic, a lot of individuals are either leaving some of the universities, or they're realizing that they need to return to community college education, whether it be because of employment issues or just because of upskilling within their current employment fields or for other educational issues purposes. Next slide, please. One of the larger priorities that we have been looking at is the student housing funding, as well as student housing insecurity. The governor's budget this year does provide one hundred million dollars in one-time Proposition Ninety-eight funding for food and housing insecurity. It as well adds additional funding for the study of building student housing and also considers sources such as bond funds, special funds, one-time sources, et cetera. One of the one of the big priorities that has been at the college level over the last year or so has been housing and food insecurity. There have been a couple of informational hearings done in the Assembly that have specifically focused on what some of the biggest student needs are, and they have essentially come down to the consensus that student housing and student food insecurity are some of the biggest priorities for students when it comes to the actual attendance at community colleges. Next slide, please. The governor's budget does propose a zero textbook cost pathway program. It does include fifteen million dollars in one-time funds to expand the zero textbook cost pathway using the OER resources, so open educational resources, and other materials that are free of charge to students. This initiative does support certificate and, I'm sorry, certificate or associate degrees that can be earned entirely by completing courses that eliminate conventional textbook costs and use alternative materials. There was some information provided at the most recent Assembly and Senate hearings, and we do look forward to what action the Assembly and Senate will take on this specific program. Next slide, please. One of the biggest cost factors for colleges, and it's not just colleges, it's also at the K-12 level, as well as the CSU and UC, is the STIRS and PIRS contribution rates. Over the last, anywhere from half of a decade to the better part of a decade, they have been increasing rates through both STIRS and PIRS, and those increasing rates have definitely been eating into the general fund costs and general fund revenues at both K-12 districts and the higher educational institutions. So the twenty twenty Budget Act reduced the local employer pension contribution rates for the two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two year. The CalSTIRS was reduced by about one point two percent, while CalPIRS was reduced by about one point nine percent. And if, and we do anticipate if any additional state general funds are available, a portion of those funds likely and hopefully will go towards paying down more of the employer contribution rate for both CalSTIRS and CalPIRS. At this moment, there is, like I had mentioned earlier, there's about ten and a half billion dollars in additional one-time general fund revenues that we'll anticipate before the end of the fiscal year. And this is on top of the anticipated fifteen billion dollars in general fund revenues that the Department of Finance had already reported back in January, that this was built into the January budget proposal. So a lot of what has been recommended by both the Legislative Analyst Office, as well as other education groups, is that the legislature should prioritize paying down as much of this, as much of this contribution rate as possible with the use of the one-time funding. Next slide, please. So capital outlay funding has definitely been one of the priorities for a lot of colleges over the last several years, especially since the passage of Proposition Fifty-One about five years ago. Now that a lot of that funding has been used up, there are a couple of other legislative proposals coming forward over this next year. One specifically is AB seventy-five, the Kindergarten Community College Public Education Facilities Bond Act. Currently, there is no appropriation tied to this. However, we do anticipate it will be somewhat like the last Facilities Bond Act that was on the November ballot in twenty twenty. I'm, excuse me, in March twenty twenty. However, that did fail. Another is SB ninety-two by Senator Stephen Glazer. This is the Public Preschool, K-12, and College Health and Safety Bond Act of twenty twenty-two. There is a fifteen billion dollar appropriation estimate. This is based on the one point two five percent of taxable property raising up to two percent of taxable property for bond capacity. As some of you may know, the TAS and B three thousand buildings are two of the main priorities for facilities projects at SOC CD. And this will be at the top of the list for asks to the Chancellor's Office as they develop their list of approved projects. Some of you may recall that over the last couple of years, we have had some success with negotiating with the Chancellor's Office and the Legislature and have secured some of the Prop Fifty-One bond funding for the IBC and Saddleback Gateway Building. So we'll continue this process and hopefully see some results with the TAS and B three thousand buildings as well. Next slide, please. So that is the conclusion for the priorities. One priority that was not listed in the slides, but we are going to try and put some more focus towards in this coming year is STEM and STEAM programs. I know that the Chancellor's Office hasn't really put forward too many concrete proposals for the STEM or STEAM programs in this current budget. However, we do anticipate that as the May revision gets closer and the budget becomes adjusted, this may become more of a discussion point at both the State Chancellor's Office and through the Department of Finance and the Legislature. So with that, I'll turn it back to Dale, and if there are any questions or discussion.
Thank you, Dale and David. And Dale, you could mispronounce Milchick or anytime, okay?
Okay.
Are there any questions from anyone, from any board member or anyone? I guess not. That was very comprehensive.
Marsha, you're not liking me tonight. That's all right.
Oh, I see it now. Okay, thank you.
No worries. Gentlemen, thank you. Couple quick questions. The AB two ninety-nine is that the apprenticeship programs, is that, maybe I missed it, is it additional grants? And does it have any chance of moving forward?
Yeah, it's to provide yeah, additional grants, and it does have a chance of moving forward, because there's also an initiative in the governor's budget to provide funding for apprenticeships, so that could be a funding source for the community colleges. As you may recall, when Governor Newsom was running for governor, he launched a Cradle to Career Initiative. And one of his initiatives on it were expanding apprenticeship programs. And he had a lot of number of other things, like childcare, preschool expansion, statewide data system, and this apprenticeship proposal is one of the last things that is on the list that he hasn't implemented yet on the Cradle to Career Program. So he has a particular interest in trying to make sure this gets through, so I think it has a good chance of getting through. Plus, I think the Democrats want to support this freshman member, Villa Padua, in trying to get his legislative package through. So I think all those things line up for potential success.
Thank you. Thanks for that. A couple of other things. The, I think it was David talked about the fully closed equity gaps by twenty twenty-seven. Is that just like all-inclusive, comprehensive gaps in terms of the academic you know, goals and milestones that we are seeking to achieve? Is that what that means?
Yeah, so it was in the Vision for Success for community colleges for districts to put together a plan on how to close equity gaps over the long term. But one of the the issues were that in the governor's budget, they said as a condition of receiving a cost of living adjustment, you have to receive, you have to submit a plan on how to close the equity gaps. A number of districts have a problem with that language, because they're not against putting together a plan to close equity gaps, but to tie it to the cost of living adjustment didn't seem appropriate. So for those districts that receive apportionment COLA, many of them are raising concerns and actually opposing that language being tied to the cost of living adjustment. For your district, even though you don't get apportionment funds, you do get categorical fund fund COLAs, and then in the adult education program, to the extent you apply for money for the adult ed program, you might be saddled with this requirement. So so the point here on these unrestricted funds is that when you get unrestricted funds, you don't want any of these strings attached. There's nothing wrong with putting together a plan, but to tie it to the use of unrestricted money doesn't seem appropriate. So that's the point we were trying to make here.
I appreciate that. And last thing is, I know we didn't have our legislative lobbying days, but are you guys gonna start arranging a few meetings with legislators?
Yes, we plan to have a lobby day. We wanted to get this plan put together before we have a lobby day, so we have something to lobby for. So we do want to have a lobby day, preferably next month or in the month of April. If you back up to the calendar and saw that there's going to be right? If you see that there's no hearings in March and April, and a lot of your requests are budgetary requests, so in March and April, that's the ideal time for us to come back in and lobby your legislative delegation and actually the committee staff and the members about what your budgetary legislative priorities are. So we wanted to use that time as the ideal time to get hold of the committee members and your delegation of what your priorities are.
Thanks, Dale.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I had one. Yeah, so these bills haven't been passed yet, right? They're just like they're getting ready to move on them, right?
Right, we're just starting the legislative session after the bills.
Gotcha. Yeah, I just want to say, the bill about student housing funds, I think that's amazing. Every time I talk to students, the number one issue is always student housing, especially in OC, that just finding, even like his studio is like two thousand dollars a month. So, which is just a lot for community college students. So yeah, I just want to mention, I think that building is really great for our students, especially in Orange County. Thank you.
Yes.
And you know, I think one of the best things that you can do when you meet with the legislator is bring students with you, because they tell it better than we can tell it. You know, they tell what's happening in their lives, and it makes it stronger. It's stronger when they talk to the legislators. Okay, thanks. And then Trustee Inman, did you have a question?
Yes, just one. On AB fourteen, if grants are given for broadband access, okay, is that to the college to create a place where the access is free, or does that go to individual students who ask for it, or what hap, how does that work?
It's a competitive grant program, and it could be it doesn't specify in the bill how or what the criteria is, but could be a variety of things. It could be a consortia with the city, the county, and all the school districts, or all the community college districts to have broadband access for everyone within that jurisdiction. It could be for the provision of hotspots. It could be for, or it could be for improving the infrastructure within the college campus. It could be for a variety of things. It hasn't been completely spelled out, and I think what they want to do is make it somewhat open-ended to give the PUC some discretion on how to allocate those funds. But it could be for all of the above, so so it depends on your creativity, and it would probably, and it would also depend on the district's interest in collaborating with other you know, governmental entities or organizations within the county.
And Trustee Inman, just to add on to what Dale had just mentioned, some of the very beginning of the bill does spell out that the very first part they're going to work on is a deep study into individual educational agencies to figure out exactly what costs they need to develop this infrastructure or the broadband systems. And then thereby figure out the best way to get them, you know, the best, I'm going to put in quotes, bang for their buck, using the available funding.
Good idea. Thank you.
Be great to get broadband to the students that really can't afford it and can't
Yes.
It'd be really helpful to bring them, so they could do their schoolwork, you know?
Right.
Right.
Okay, are there any questions? Okay, I think that's it. So thank you. Okay, I think I think that's it. So thank you um David and Dale. Um, and thank you, Letitia. Letitia, do you have anything else to say?
Yes, thank you, President Milchikor. I was just going to mention that if these priorities are suitable for the board, we'll put together a similar document as we have in the past uh online, just to outline what all our priorities are. So it's a quick reference for you. So um, even in advance of some of the meetings um that we'll do at the state level and then any additional meetings we do at the federal level, you'll be able to, you know, have just a quick reference to remind you of our priorities and kind of that infographic.
Excellent. It's good to have priorities. So when we meet with the legislators, we can really um talk about the things that are so important to us and ask for the help in it. So that that's what we did in the last meeting and it was really helpful. Okay, thank you. Thank you so much, Letitia. It was great. Thanks, David and Dale. So so now I guess we're moving on to um the the next discussion item, which is um talking, this this is item 4.2. And it's the annual audit review. Uh, item 4.2 to the and and the representative from Clifton Larson Allen LLP will review the audit reports on the Saddleback College, the Saddleback College Foundation, Irvine Valley Foundation and the um in our district. So are the auditors here now? So these auditors have have um done a report on the on the district and there's a extensive report um in in the board agenda that was really fascinating. Thank you.
Thank you. So uh, hello, everybody. Uh, my name is Said Farhan. I'm a manager with Clifton Larson Allen and I have Renee Graves, who is the engagement principal uh presenting with me today. So typically we would be presenting to the board in November, but needless to say, 2020 was quite interesting. And uh, but we're very excited to be here today to finally present to the board. So before I start, I would like to thank Anne Marie and her team. This audit was a collaborative effort, uh more so than in the past since this was performed 100% remotely. And we're really appreciative of management's responsiveness in facilitating our requests and ensuring that we were able to meet the timeline of the deliverables. Uh, so we met with the audit committee last month, January 19th, to discuss the district and the foundation audit reports along with our required communication for each of the entity being audited. So um, those items were discussed, these items were discussed in detail with both the members of the audit committee and management. So today I plan to discuss the key components of the report packages that were issued as well as to answer any questions that you may have for.
I'm sorry, Said, I just want to say one thing. We're after this audit report, we're moving item 6.19, which is the last item in our agenda up so that we'll vote on it right after the report. So it makes some sense to everyone. Okay, thank you.
For sure. Thank you. So uh, for most of the items, I do not plan to reference any specific page numbers. So please ask if you have any, uh, if you would like the page number I'm referring to. So starting with the district report, uh, the components I would like to discuss would be the opinion, which immediately follows the table of contents. So we are issuing a clean or unmodified opinion on the financial statements, which basically means that the report prepared by management is fairly stated and follows the appropriate government accounting standards. And this is also the highest level of assurance that we can provide. So um, there were no new accounting standards this year, uh, but there are more coming in the future and we have a footnote disclosure uh addressing the upcoming standards. So after our opinion letter, we have the management discussion analysis section. So in this section, management does a really good job of explaining the changes in balances and providing context behind the numbers that are presented in the financials. So it's very helpful for the readers to understand the financial statements as they can be complex. And it also provides an explanation of the activities that were driving some of the changes in the key financial statement items from the prior year. After the management discussion analysis section, we have the financial statements. So the first set of financial statements are that of the district-wide activities and the discreetly presented component units, which are the foundations. So followed by followed following those set of statements, we have the statements for the fiduciary activities. So this would be the ASG and the student representation fee funds and the statements. And after that, we have the statements for the retiree uh benefit trust activities. So following the statements, we have the footnotes to the financial statements. So uh, and these are pretty consistent from the prior year. So footnote one um goes over the summary of the significant accounting policies. So there were no changes internally as it relates to the accounting policies um during fiscal year 2020. There are some significant disclosures, specifically the ones that are pertaining to uh the pension liabilities, which is on footnote nine and the and the other post-employment benefit disclosures on footnote 10. And upcoming accounting standards that I've mentioned earlier are disclosed on footnote 16. So the report package also includes the required supplementary information, which is driven by the government accounting standards. Uh, so basically, these are expanded schedules pertaining to pension and other post-employment benefits. We have the supplementary information, which is required by uh the federal and state agencies. And here we have a wide variety of schedules really. So starting with the history of the organization, auxiliaries in good standing, schedules of federal and state expenditures and a few other expenditure, a few other fixed uh schedules that are required by the California Community Colleges Chancellor's Office. And uh, the district uh report package also consists of three other opinion letters. So the first of of the letters would be the letter uh addressing the internal controls and compliance over financial reporting in accordance with government auditing standards. So we also have the auditor's report on state compliance and the auditor's report on internal controls and compliance relating to federal awards, which is required by the uniform guidance, which is basically the district's single audit report. So this year uh for the single audit, we tested three major federal programs, uh student financial aid and two other programs related to uh the funding received from the CARES Act. And then these would be the higher education emergency relief funds from the US Department of Education and the coronavirus relief fund, which were funds passed through from the Chancellor's Office as COVID-19 response block grant. Uh, we have reported three instances of non-compliance pertaining to student financial aid, which were discussed in details with management and the audit committee. And management has provided corrective action plan in response to those observations. And we will include the status of the corrective action plan as part of our reporting package for fiscal year 2021. So that's basically a summary of the district's financial uh reporting package. And as it relates to the other deliverables, we did issue the audit report for Saddleback and IBC Foundations and the review report for the district foundation. So this year, the college uh foundations did adopt uh two new accounting standards and ASC 605 and 606 addressing revenue recognition. And our opinion has not been modified due to the adoption of these standards. So basically, we are issuing an unmodified opinion on all of those reports, similar to the opinion rendered on the district's financial and single audit reports. So um, that basically uh concludes my part of the presentation. And uh, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have, or if not, I can just pass it to Renee to go over the other required communication with governance.
I don't see any questions. If there's no questions, then we'll we'll move over to Renee Graves uh for your presentation.
Yep, thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. So Said's covered the quantitative aspects of the audit and the financial statements themselves. And what I want to um go over with you tonight is our, what's required by our professional standards as well, which is providing more qualitative feedback regarding the audit. So it's more about the process of the audit. So um, there are a series of letters that are issued for the district as well as for each of the foundations that have an audit. So um, a a letter is not issued for the district foundation since that is a review engagement. But um, what is included in these letters are some information in regard to how smoothly the audit went, what issues that we discussed with management, if we had any audit adjustments, items of that nature or any observations. So to start with the the district's letter, um, the district's letter is fairly uneventful, if you will, in that all of those areas, um, we did not incur any any issues. So we didn't have any disagreements, any difficulties, any audit adjustments, anything of that nature. So um, we do also point out any key accounting policies that the district follows and Said had mentioned those when he talked about the footnotes to the financial statements. Um, also sharing with the audit committee and management what the significant footnote disclosures are, as well as what are some of the key estimates that we are looking at as we go about our audit procedures and rendering our opinion to make sure that those estimates are based on sound um accounting, financial information, industry standards and those types of things. So the one thing I would like to point out in the district report, um, it's on the third page, is that we do have two observations that we shared with uh management and the audit committee. And they were very minor non-compliance issues, one related to um the single audit and the work that we have to do there. And there was reporting that has to happen within a very short time period, within 10 days if there was any changes. And so we found uh an instance where uh information was not uh reported to the federal government within that 10-day period. There's no negative consequences of that and and that's a reason we did not feel it necessary to include it as a finding and that including it in this communication letter uh meets our professional standards. And then the other area was related to a state compliance issue. And that's uh in the area of instructional service agreements where there needs to be an agreement between the district and the actual instructor. And so during our testing, we found that there were two instructors that did not have that contract in place while they were teaching the courses. So um, that we just included in this letter and to make sure that the audit committee is aware. Similar letters were issued for the the two foundations, Saddleback College Foundation and um Irvine Valley Colleges Foundation. And again, we didn't have any issues with the audit. Most items there are very clean. You know, no difficulties, no, no um areas of concerns. Or we had to go back and and investigate or do some additional work regarding their implementation of accounting standards to make sure it was consistent with industry standards or interpretations that we're used to seeing in that area. There were some uh comments that were included in that letter, those letters as well. And we have every confidence that they will be corrected in the following fiscal year. And we will, as I mentioned in regard to the district, we will follow up with those comments uh for the foundation as well. So that's our other deliverable that you have, we have for you. And again, if there's any questions about these letters or if anyone has come up with a question related to the the audit reports, we're happy to answer them.
Well, it seems seems pretty, they they seem like very minor findings and you 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 looked at both um, both foundations. I I, as far as I understand, the district foundation is really almost non-existent, right? Right? I I don't think it really does much. And there's nobody, no staff working on it or anything. And it is would, you know, most people would give to their college. They don't want to give to a district. So that makes sense. Are there any other questions from anyone? I know it's it's a, it's a very extensive report. It's um over 100 pages long. So it's it's very well done. I I have read it and I'm gonna go back and read it again because it's very fascinating. So thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? Okay, so I I think we can we can go ahead and move. Um, let me see, I've got two extra screens here. I think we could move item 6.19 forward. So can everyone go to item 6.19, which is um the very last item under um general action items in in the um and we could, um, do you have anything else to say about where what we're doing is we're accepting the annual audit report? Are there any?
I move that we accept the uh audit report.
Okay, trustee moves. Is there a second?
I have a second.
Who said this first? I'm sorry.
Me.
Oh, trustee Jay. And who was the second thing?
No.
Trustee Raydell.
Trustee Raydell. Okay, trustee Whit Raydell is is second. So trustee Jay uh makes the motion, trustee Whit Raydell. Second said, are are there um any comments? Okay, all all in favor signify by saying aye. Never mind, we have to do a roll call. Isn't that right? Okay, let's do a roll call for this.
Trustee Inman.
Yes.
Trustee Jay.
Aye, yes.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Milchikor.
Aye.
Trustee Pratergass.
Aye.
Trustee Raydell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Monapi.
Aye.
Okay, this item passes and and thank you, um Said Farhan and Renee Graves um from the Clifton Larson Allen Audit Committee Audit Audit Company. And I'm delighted to hear that things are going well in our district financially. So that's great. Good news. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the next item is uh presentation 4.3. This, it's about Saddleback College Athletics and Irvine Valley College Athletics. You know, talking about the California Community College Athletics Association or CCCAA, opt in or opt out. Who is going to be um talking on this uh agenda item?
That'll be um our two presidents. So give me one moment and I will get them in the meeting.
I know these are tough issues now, but I know you're working on it and doing it. So it's great.
While we're while we're bringing them into the meeting, I would suggest that we go through this presentation and then you probably want to take a vote to extend the meeting and a break after we get through this presentation.
Sounds good to me. And then don't forget, the board has to come back to finish the closed session items after after the meeting's over, after our open meeting is over. We have to go back to closed sessions. So so the board's been at this a long time. So thank you for all your hard work. Okay, go ahead, President.
Good evening. Good evening, everybody. Thank you, President Milchikor. We're gonna continue on the theme of positivity and optimism. The last time we reported to you on plan for athletics, it was for spring one where we essentially opted out of almost all of the uh sports because of where we knew the current wave was going to be at the start of that season. So now we're gonna tell you uh where we are in terms of the pandemic uh and how we are responding to the need to opt in or opt out of various sports for spring two for the second half of the semester. Vice Chancellor Gabel, if you will, bring up our presentation.
Good to be positive, that's for sure.
It's always better to be positive and it's uh it's been rare in the last year that we can be positive uh using science and data. But things have gotten very positive and I have to say, um, the data that you're about to see was submitted six days ago so that we could get everything out to you in hard copy. But even in those six days, the data has changed uh in a very significant way to make us even more optimistic about the second half of the semester and particularly for summer or fall. Slide. We're gonna start with our status uh in the county and tier. When we put this data together, we were at an adjusted case rate of 29.7. Today, we're at 20.7, so dropped by a third um just in the six days since I gathered this data. So we are coming down from the last wave really quickly, like we are sliding down with all of our might. And that's a really good place to be. Positivity at that time was 9.4% and today it's 7.8%. So we've actually dropped down below the 8% threshold for the red tier on positivity. So we anticipate that by next week, uh, we will have the criteria that qualifies for the red tier, which is substantial risk as opposed to widespread risk, which is where we are right now. Uh, and that's the point at which we would talk about bringing back athletics. Uh, and as you're gonna see, much of the athletics we talk about um wouldn't even start for another month. So we're gonna be in a really good place by that time. Slide. One thing uh we want to look at though is where we're gonna be for the rest of the semester and going into summer. This is the IHME model out of University of Washington. It's the data model that I use the most in terms of informing um our decision-making and the discussions we have. And before you get too worried about this, you will see that there is a wave um coming up in the middle of our semester. Some people are calling this the variant wave. There have been widespread predictions uh that the variants would start another wave. And that the only wave you see there that's very tall, the one that's even worse than where we just came out of, is uh the worst case scenario. But I want to tell you as we sit here today that all of these waves are much flatter on the projection today than they were when I pulled this from the IHME site just six days ago. In other words, even in the last six days, epidemiologists have turned much more positive about us potentially not having a wave due to the variants this spring, or possibly a very small wave, a small blip that we would come over. And the reason this makes us feel so optimistic is because this means that we're probably approaching what looks like early signs of herd immunity. And the reason this makes us feel so optimistic is because this means that we're probably approaching what looks like early signs of herd immunity. Meaning that in addition to the 10% of the population that has tested positive, we think about a third of the population has actually had COVID. And now we're heading for about 15% of the population having been vaccinated, which means we're close to 50% of people who are not available for that virus to latch on to and get sick. And for the rest of us who haven't had COVID or who haven't been vaccinated yet, most of us are being very careful, which means the virus is running out of hosts and that's a great thing to have a virus on the run. So we think that the rest of spring is gonna be fairly flat, continuing to come down. Or at worst, we'll have a minor blip like the one on the bottom shown here in green, such that we will be done no matter what by the end of the semester into early summer. We should be approaching herd immunity at that point in time and be very safe for the future. I want to add just one thing before I turn this over to President Hernandez to talk about our athletic selections for the opt-in, opt-out form. And that is you heard from Professor Stevens, the great concern that we all have about the uncertainty of fall. I can't provide certainty, science never provides certainty. What we work on is probability. And the probability now suggests with higher and higher numbers that we're in for a really good fall, that we're on top of this. The vaccinations are probably gonna beat the variants and we're gonna be in good shape for fall with probability. Can never say for certainty, but certainly for spring term, we look to be in very good shape. President Hernandez and slide.
Thank you, Dr. Stern, and good evening, board members. If you might recall our December presentation, we had mentioned that this past summer in July of 2020, the California Community College Athletic Association, what we refer to as the CCC2A, created two spring segments. What they in essence did is create a spring one segment, which as Dr. Stern mentioned, was the traditional fall sports, which back in December, given the conditions and the modeling, we decided at both colleges to opt out and not participate. And then they created spring two segment, which in essence is all our traditional spring sports. Today, I want to share a few details about this as well as our recommendation to opt in for spring two. The current slide that you are viewing has the left-hand side, all of Saddleback College Spring Two Sports. And on the right-hand side is the IVC programs. You'll notice that the CCC2A did designate all sports by contact risk. So it ranges from high, medium and low. You can see that the saddlebags bring two sports are all outdoor sports. And for the most part, as a result of that, have been deemed in the medium to low contact risk category. IVC has two high-risk contact sports, badminton and volleyball for men, predominantly because those are played indoors. Although I would note, and there is a footnote on the slide that notes that it still is a non-contact nature, unlike for example, wrestling or football. In terms of the spring two schedule, practice would officially begin on March 27th. Competition would begin on April 10th and end on June 12th, with regional postseason, June 16th to June 23rd. I also want to mention that when opting in, colleges do agree to adhere to testing requirements. I think we talked a little bit about this in December. Testing requirements as set forth by the California Department of Public Health, our Institute for Higher Ed and the NCAA. So what that means is that the type, the level and frequency of testing requirements would be based on the sport risk category. There is a very high level of specificity around those testing protocols and requirements, including what would be required in preseason, in-season, as well as for outdoor and indoor athletic programs. And rightfully so, right? Because we want to ensure the health and safety of both our student athletes and our employees. The deadline to indicate participation in spring two, the CCC2A has a deadline of this Friday, February 26. We are recommending to opt in for both colleges for spring segment two in order to allow us consideration. As I think, I hope you are assured, and as Dr. Elliot Stern has just really gone over the data, it's important that we know that we will continue to monitor the conditions. We, if needed, if, if, if the modeling and the conditions were to change, we could certainly change course either as a whole or individual basis, sport by sport. But we are feeling very hopeful. This is certainly something that our student athletes have been looking forward to. And we are recommending to opt in for spring two for both colleges. And if there are any other questions, certainly entertain them.
I know people use Israel as kind of a model, they, they, the, the country of Israel, they've vaccinated 30% of their population and the, the rate of COVID-19 has gone down 80%. So you know, that's kind of a model for the rest of the world to, to, that, you know, the more people you vaccinate, the, the less chance there'd be of the, if, if you vaccinate everyone, the variants can't develop because there's no place, there's no one to, for them to develop in. So, so things are looking a lot better, I, I'm very positive. Are there any other questions from anyone?
Looks good, guys, looks good, gentlemen. I, I, I'm glad you answered that you cited badminton. I was wondering why it was considered high contact, but because it's indoors.
Indoors, that's correct.
Yeah.
That looks good to me.
What, what trustee Wright?
I said it, looks good to me.
Yeah, yeah.
I think we should do it.
Okay, yeah, it, it really is very safe to be outdoors, but you know, I think we should move forward with this and see how it goes, okay? My feeling is to do that.
Thank you all.
Okay, thank you so much for the presentation. We, we, we love our athletes, you know, thank you.
President Milchick, you wanna take a, a vote to extend the meeting?
Yeah, is there, is there a motion to extend the meeting until 10 o'clock? I hope not, but just maybe, you know?
I'll move to extend the meeting till 10:00. And in the motion, I think we should also consider 10-minute break.
I think you're right.
I second.
You want to take a 10-minute break right now, right after we make this motion?
Yes.
Okay, okay, I'll, I'll, can we just vote on this or do we have to have a roll call?
Roll call.
Okay, can you call the roll, please?
Trustee Inman.
Hi.
Trustee Jay.
Hi.
Trustee Jamal.
Hi.
Trustee Milchick.
Hi.
Trustee Prandergast.
Hi.
Trustee Ray Dell.
Hi.
Trustee Wright.
Hi.
Trustee, student trustee Monapi.
Hi.
Okay, thank you. So right now we'll take, it's, it's 8:45, so 8:55, how about if we come back at 8:55? What do you think?
All right.
Okay, thanks. So now we're, we're going to the consent calendar. So are there any items that any board member would like to remove from the consent calendar?
5.7.
Okay, trustee, is, 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 okay.
5, 5.8.
5.7, Jamal. 5.8, Jay, is, is that it? Or any other members would like to remove anything from the consent calendar?
I'd like to point out something about 5.1.
Okay, so should I pull it off?
Yes, please.
Okay, 5, 5.1.
Move approval of the balance of the consent calendar.
I second.
Is, is there, can you call the roll with, with the, with the exception of those three items?
Trustee Inman.
Yes, I.
Trustee Jay.
Hi.
Trustee Jamal.
Hi.
Trustee Milchick.
Hi.
Trustee Prandergast.
Hi.
Trustee Ray Dell.
Hi.
Trustee Wright.
Hi.
Student trustee Monapi.
Hi.
Okay, thank you. So now we're going to item 5.1 and the chancellor, Burke, pulled it off. Did something you wanted to mention about it?
Yes, the very last page of the exhibits shows the board of trustees' goals that you proposed at the retreat. And I just wanted to point out to you that they were in here for your review. You can choose to ask us to bring them back and use this as a review and study this month and then have us form, have you formally adopt them next month. Or you can choose to vote to accept the minutes in 5.1 and include the goals as part of that as the acceptance. But I wanted to make you aware that that would be what you would do.
Do the board understand that? If, if we want to just accept those that we decided in our board retreat, we could just approve it, and I'm not sure how to handle it if we don't.
I, I would suggest, suggest we try to do it separately, just so that it, they are, these are our goals. So I think.
Excellent idea.
She suggested except for review and study and then move, move forward for approval next month. That's my suggestion.
Okay, so we, we.
So I recommend that you make a motion to approve the minutes and accept for review and study the 2021 board goals.
I make a move, I move to approve the minutes of the prior board meeting and to accept for review and study the goals that we established at the, what was the date? At the Jan, January 23rd, 2021 retreat.
I second it.
Okay, so it's, the motion is made by trustee Jamal, seconded by trustee Jay to accept for approval the, the minutes, but for review and study the goals, which is at the end of that item. So can we take a, can you call the roll for that?
Yes, trustee Inman.
Hi.
Trustee Jay.
Hi.
Trustee Jamal.
Hi.
Trustee Milchick.
Hi.
Trustee Prandergast.
Hi.
Trustee Ray Dell.
Hi.
Trustee Wright.
Hi.
Student trustee Monapi.
Hi.
Okay, and, and so now we're going to item 5.7, trustee Jamal pulled, pulled it off, so.
I did, I pulled it, I'm, I'm supportive of the item. I just wanted to know if someone from Saddleback College could provide us a very brief summary of the audience that we intend to reach with this contract with the employment training panel.
Sure.
So it's Israel?
Yeah, we have Israel here, so Israel, take it.
Yes, good afternoon and everyone and trustee Jamal. The, your question is the target audience. We have a group of employers that already submitted what's called an ETP 100E certification form, which basically means they agreed to work with us so we can provide training to their workforce. There's large employers such as Alcon, Amazon, FoodTech, B-Brawn Medical, among others. And each of them has estimated how many employees they want us to train over the next two years. And some of these we have worked with before, so they'll come back for more training, which is wonderful. For example, Amazon wants us to train additional 250 of their employees. And we've been delivering ongoing training with Amazon. We have Alcon that's asking for additional 45 employees to be trained. Another company called Astronics Test Systems, that they want us to train 103 people. FoodTech Advanced Sensor Technology wants to train 100 and 100 employees under the agreement. And it goes on from that. And so most of these, they're, most of the industry sectors, we're focused on our priority industry sectors for the ETP, which includes manufacturing, transportation and warehousing, information technology and multimedia. We can add to that, but that's what we started with. And we're very excited. I do want to point out that we are now one of only 11 colleges in the entire state of California that will be holding multiple, an ETP multiple employer contract. And we're the only college in Orange County that has an ETP multiple employer contract. So it puts us in a very unique position as a college to create strategic partnerships and deliver training to industry.
And so Israel, the training, I'm, I'm looking here, it's focused on business skills, computer skills, literary skills.
Genius improvement and manufacturing skills, yes. And we can add to that as well. Let's say we have a, a large hospital that wants us to train CNAs or nurses. We just go back to ETP, say we want to add another topic, subject matter and gain approval. The agreement is amended and then we just deliver some additional training.
This is really great and I'm glad to see Astronics is into it. I'd note that I'm kind of, kind of friends with the CEO and I actually had the former chancellor and the former president of IVC tour Astronics a few years ago. I brought them there because, yeah, because they had interest in possibly doing something at ATEP.
Oh, that's fantastic. I'll just, a, a point, a side point, that some of these employers that we work with really turn into strategic partnerships because they recruit our students, they provide internship opportunities, they hire our students. And some of them turn into philanthropic relationships where they donate to the foundation for gala.
Yeah, he's a really, Jim Olato is really a good guy and I think someone that's a great partner. I mean, not the only company, I've just got other great companies there, but the Astronics, I'm, I'm glad to hear as well.
Great.
Thank you, Israel.
You're welcome.
So, yeah, thank you, that's a, this is really exciting. So trustee Jamal, do you want to make a motion to approve it?
I will, but I think trustee Whit has another question.
So sorry, trustee Whit?
I do. Israel, when you say you're training 320, where are you training them? You're training at the job site and who are faculty or who, you know, how, how do you run? Having, having run and then the internships, the externships for nursing in the summer for 20 years, sometimes they got paid, sometimes they, they didn't. It had to be a partnership, that's for sure. But who would be the, who would be the preceptors or you call them that, I don't know, the mentors? Is it, it's on job site, right? And then you, who do you hire to observe all that?
That's a good question. Well, we hire trainers, we deliver the training onsite. Lately, it's been online, all those, the training programs that we can deliver online, we deliver online. Others will take, will deliver onsite, obviously following safety protocol, social distancing and masks and et cetera. Typically, we try to, if we, whenever possible, we try to use our faculty to deliver the training.
Good.
And both full-time and or part-time. In other cases, we use faculty from other colleges within the region who have the qualifications. In some cases, if it's a unique subject matter, we hire qualified independent consultants. And if they qualify to be an independent consultant and/or we hire them as an NBU. A, a good example of an independent consultant is we hired this organization called Lean Coach and they are delivering Lean Six Sigma training to Amazon. We deliver yellow belt, green belt and black belt training. That's something we don't offer as a college, so I go outside. Also, we use an independent contractor to deliver OSHA training, OSHA 10 and OSHA 30, very qualified individual. But other than that, we mostly try to use our own faculty whenever possible.
Okay.
Israel, Israel, I, I'm really, I like the amount of money that was, the, the grant that was given to you, almost $400,000.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, the, the maximum amount that one can apply for funding through ETP currently is $650,000 for a two-year period. That's been reduced over the years because of budget constraints within the state. But as funding improves, the funding amounts increase. So we were very fortunate because as we were at the panel meeting presenting and requesting these funds, there are a number of organizations that were not funded at all or their funding request was reduced to 50% of the ask. So the ETP felt that we have the infrastructure in place and the personnel to be very successful.
Do you run data sheets of the, what, of the students that come in and leave and, I mean, certain items that you evaluate?
Yeah, there's a lot of data, we're very data-driven as a, we have to report a lot of data to ETP. I won't go too, too much into the weeds, but we do capture the employees' salary and other demographic information that we report to ETP. And then 90 days after the last days of training, we send the, the list of employees that have been trained back to the employer to verify salary, if there's been a salary gain because of the additional training. And also we gather information from the employer, the employees. We have them complete surveys on the training, the quality of the training. They also rate the trainer so we can get feedback for continuous improvement.
Okay. All right, there are a few other questions, but for the sake of evening, I can email you.
That'd be great. I'm always available.
All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Great program. So are there any other questions? Trustee Jamal, would you like to?
I'll move 5.7.
Okay, is there a second for that? Okay, so trustee Jamal makes the motion and trustee Inman seconds it. Can you call the roll for this item 5.7?
Trustee Inman.
Aye.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye. Did you hear me?
Trustee Melchiker.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Rydell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Monapi.
Aye.
Okay, the next item trustee Jay pulled off and it was 5.8 of the cellular tower on top of the Learning Resource Center.
I have a question. Does the district incur any cost because of the cellular equipment? Like, are we paying for their electricity? Because the cellular equipment uses a lot of electricity.
That's a really good question.
I remember when this tower was first put on. Go ahead. You can answer it first and then I'll make my comment.
Okay, they incur they have a lot of equipment. Are they using it in any part of our building or are they paying for it? How much space does it take up?
This particular antenna is located on top of the LRC at Saddleback College.
Yes.
But I will allow Corey Watson, the vice president of administrative services, to answer the other piece of your question.
So it's on the roof, right?
It is, yes.
It's on the roof, so it's not taking up space here to otherwise be used.
Yeah. We're getting an income of like $40,000 a year for five years.
But are we occurring any expense like the electricity for this antenna?
I remember I just have to say I remember when we first had the first proposal to put a tower on top of the library in those days now called the LRC. The board sent it back because we said we could get more money for this and we were absolutely right. We got a lot more money for it. So so that was a good thing that we did. I'm proud of that.
Well, I just want to know that we're
No, it is not. It is not metered separately, so we are paying for the electricity of the cellular tower.
Could be very, very expensive.
And I know I maybe I'll promote Dr. Stern.
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, that's a good question. I need to look into that one. I I believe Anne Marie is correct that we're paying for that, but
It could maybe be more than what they're paying.
I'm not I'm not sure because we're getting right now. We're getting a five-year contract term with four additional terms.
Yeah, but it is costing the college a lot to have that.
We're getting almost $40,000 the first year with a 3% increase each year thereafter. So it's going to be 15 more years. So I mean, okay, we should have your question answered. Okay.
Yeah, I'll look into that.
Okay, so the contract has been signed, but it needs to approve by us. So can we somehow figure out in one
Can we?
day what the electricity bill is? I mean, I think we has a very good point.
Yeah, that one started out, you know, over the 20 plus years we've had that. It started out at a fraction of of that rate. So it has increased substantially over time, probably I would expect faster than any utility rate, but I don't think that the utilities are costing us that much. That one I don't think is very significant.
Any of the utility bills for the cellular tower?
You might be right, but I I happen to look into it and that's that's a pretty good price we're getting for the cell tower on there that from what after I looked into it. So I did look into it.
But the electricity cost could be more than what we're getting for it. I would like to have this looked into.
Trustee Jay, we wouldn't we can't identify how much electricity it's using because it's not metered separately. It's tied into the building. So it would be extremely difficult for us to try to figure out how much electricity that particular cell tower is pulling, especially since it's been up there for about 20 years. So we can't even go back to previous utility bills before we first installed it to see what the draw on electricity was. So I don't know that we'll be able to get the answer of how much it's costing us on the electricity since it's been there for so long.
Okay.
TJ has a question.
I'm just I was just Googling it. Go ahead, TJ.
Can I talk?
Yes, please talk. I was Googling that that question. Go ahead.
So just for sake of knowledge, it would cost $3,300 a month for it to be even. And I I'm hard pressed to say that it would draw $3,000 a month of electricity. So we've got to be making out.
I think we're making money on it from everything I could say, you know. I mean, I appreciate your question now, you know.
I, yeah, I it is probably possible to find out how much cell tower how much cell towers draw. But but yeah, we wouldn't be able to isolate ours.
Okay.
So I decided not to ask about this item. I'm glad trustee Jay did. I had some emails with the with the chancellor today. Marcia, I know you said you looked into it and I certainly have a lot of contacts in the telecommunications space. It seems like it just seemed like it not it seemed like a small amount that we were getting based on today's market, but I haven't done benchmarking of this and I had asked the question of whether was this a negotiation or how do we end up at this price? It seemed it seemed low.
It does.
But but I was I just I don't I don't know whether we got the right price. I mean, it's pretty small amount, Marcia, you know, we're getting.
Yeah, I know. We were my family was negotiating trying to get a cell tower and it wasn't anywhere close to this amount. We never got it actually. So we do have we do have a cell tower in one of our properties, actually. How much are we getting for that? We get 1,500 a month for a cell tower on one of our properties in another state.
Yeah, we did a fair amount of research trying to establish a fair market value. So we looked at other community college districts, cell tower agreements, and then we've been negotiating. We have AT&T also on campus. We've been negotiating with Verizon as well. You know, with Verizon with, you know, a few years back, we were trying to push them to 4,000 and and they walked and went looking elsewhere. They have come back. So now we're we're trying to find find an agreement with all of those, but it seems like this price range is about where they're landing. They're pushing pushing back pretty hard to get up above that.
Like some more research into it.
And I think I talked to the chancellor because I went over the whole agenda with the chancellor earlier. And I asked her and I don't remember you could where do these funds go? Where did this? You know, money go? Does it go to the district or does it go to Saddleback College?
To Saddleback College.
To the college and they and they could use the money for whatever they want, right?
Correct.
I do remember we negotiated the first cell tower and we got more money for it because we negotiated for it, but that was 20 years ago. That was a long time ago. So I was proud that we did. So but as as Corey just mentioned, they get a lot more now than we got them. So I I
I just worry about whether it's costing us because cell towers use a lot of electricity.
Yeah, I just Googled it. Wait a second. Where did I Google? I just closed it now.
Okay, let's keep going.
All right, well, Bobby, can we I think we need to make a decision on this item.
Okay.
Has it has it been signed, the agreement?
No, it's been it's been up for 20 years. The cell tower has been up for 20 years.
I'll move approval.
I second it.
Second, okay. So trustee Prendergast moves approval and trustee Wright. I know we've been trying to get a cell tower on another property for years and we haven't gotten it. This is pretty exciting. But I I understand what you're saying, trustee Jay. So trustee Prendergast makes a motion and trustee Wright seconds it. Can you can we call the the roll to see if it gets approval?
Trustee Inman.
Aye.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Trustee Jamal.
Trustee Melchiker.
Aye.
I said I.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Rydell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Monapi.
Aye.
Okay, that's the the next item. Yes, wait here. The general action item. First, the Saddleback College accreditation midterm reports is here for acceptance. Does someone from Saddleback want to say anything about it?
Well, it's both Saddleback and Irvine Valley.
Yeah, I saw that. Saddleback and Irvine Valley College. So do the college presidents want to mention it, something about it or?
President Hernandez, you're free to speak.
I have nothing to say to it specifically. We'd be happy to take any questions. But we're very proud of the work this represents and we want to reach out and thank all the faculty that have been involved and the managers that have been involved in this. It takes a lot of people and a lot of work to put together a mid-cycle report like this.
Yes, it does.
Doesn't trustee Hernandez, I mean, President Hernandez, do you have anything to say?
I would echo the same as my colleague, Dr. Stern.
Yeah, I really enjoyed it. I enjoyed reading it very much. As I mentioned at the last board meeting when it was here for review and study. You could you could see the flavor of each college in it. You could see the both colleges handled it differently and each college had a different flavor and that was that was just beautiful that they each and they each really cared about what they were doing and really wanted to make it a go and really wanted to answer the questions that were asked in the last accreditation report. Okay, trustee Prendergast has his hand raised.
Yeah, so the school I'm at, we're going through WASC, which is the K through 12 version of of this. There was a move in the K through 12 level to shorten the amount of time between reviews. It went from six years to three. Is that happening with the ACC?
No, ACCJC did the opposite. They went from a six-year cycle to a seven-year cycle.
Well, that's
So this is the midterm of the seven-year cycle.
Well, lucky us.
I move that we accept the accreditation midterm report.
I second it.
The trustee Jay makes a motion to accept the accreditation for us and trustee Wright seconds it. Can you call the roll? They're great, great reports. Thank you.
Trustee Inman.
Aye.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Melchiker.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Rydell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Monapi.
Aye.
Okay, and trustee 6.2 is the Board of Governors 2021 Classified Employee of the Year and our district nominated, as I mentioned earlier, Amy Hunter, who's Senior Administrative Assistant to IVC and she's really exceptional. She's very, very hardworking and does an incredible job and loves the college. So I'm really delighted that that she's nominated. So are there are there any questions or comments?
So moved.
Okay, trustee Wright moves and is there a second?
Second.
And trustee Jay seconds and can you call the roll, please?
Trustee Inman.
Aye.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Melchiker.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Rydell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Monapi.
Trustee Monapi, did you say aye?
Yes, aye.
Okay, thank you. She said aye. I didn't hear. Sorry. Okay, the next the next item is 6.3 Academic Year 2021 Non-Resident Tuition Fees. They've increased it by $5. When I read the information and they they're competitive with all the surrounding districts. It's about the same amount for surrounding districts as all for the non-resident tuition fees, which is the amount we charge for non-residents. So is there a motion to approve this?
I move.
I still second.
Okay, okay, trustee Wright approves it and trustee Wittwooddale seconds it. Are there any questions or comments? Okay, can you call the roll, please?
Trustee Inman.
Aye.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Melchiker.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Rydell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Monapi.
Aye.
Okay, 6.4 is at Ren Valley College Soccer and Practice Field Project, which is an ongoing project and it's
So moved.
Five and a half million dollars. Almost 14 acres. Okay, so it's moved by trustee Wright. Is that it?
Trustee Jamal.
Trustee Jamal moved it and trustee Jay seconded. Okay, can you call the roll, please? Are there any questions? This is 14 acres at IVC.
Trustee Inman.
Aye.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Melchiker.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Rydell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Monapi.
Aye.
Okay, item 6.5 is IVC's Building B12 2000 Chemistry Classroom. It's a three-year project. This year it's $888,000 by SS and K Construction. Is there a motion to approve this item?
So moved.
Okay, trustee Jay moved and is there a second? And trustee Inman seconds. Are there any questions or comments? Okay, can you call the roll, please?
Trustee Inman.
Aye.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Melchiker.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Rydell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Monapi.
Aye.
In item 6.6 Parking Fees for Summer, they're not going to charge parking fees. So is there any question or is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
TJ's moves and trustee Wright seconds. Can you call the roll, please?
Trustee Inman.
Aye.
Yeah, there's a question.
Trustee Prendergast has a question. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Just real quick, it's my understanding that under the CERSA funds, we can get reimbursed for lost revenue. Has this been calculated yet for what we would be applying to get? Or is it just
Revenue from our parking?
Yeah. Yes, it has been calculated. And I don't remember the number off the top of my head, but that's something that we can send to you, trustee Prendergast.
But I just want to make sure that we're getting that reimbursement. I don't need to know the amount.
Great.
Yes, we're we're looking at not only parking fees to be reimbursed for, but child development fees, community education fees, any other fees that as well as
Permit for use?
Glad you're on top of it. We're glad you're on top of it. Thanks, trustee Prendergast. Okay, I guess you can call the roll. You can park on our campus for free this summer. Go ahead.
Trustee Inman.
Aye.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Melchiker.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Rydell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Monapi.
Aye.
Okay, I'm excited to talk about item 6.7 because it's a donation agreement for the amount of $250,000 to be named for this family to be named at the IVC Performing Arts, named the IVC Performing Arts Main Theater Stage will be named after them. This is a very exciting donation to our college. Who would like to speak about this donation?
I'd like to ask Dr. Hernandez to to say a few words.
Yeah, of course. That's why I asked.
I I think we're thrilled for this opportunity. This donor in so many ways doesn't have a history with us. a history with us, other than his daughter graduated from Irvine Valley College. And as I understand it, he takes, you know, occasional walks through the campus and reached out to our foundation director, executive director, Alyssa Oransky, and they had a conversation and was very interested in establishing this irrevocable trust as a way to leave a legacy to the college. So this is only our second naming that I'm aware of. And we work very closely with both the Saddleback College Foundation Directors and with Business Services to work out the arrangements that you've seen before you.
Very exciting. Alyssa Oransky, did you want to say something?
I see you there. Good evening. Thank you for giving me the floor for a minute. I think Dr. Hernandez really said all of it. It's a really exciting opportunity. I've had many discussions with Mr. Resonore. He is a delightful human being and I look forward to meeting him in person. I believe this is the first of many to come.
That's fabulous. It'll be called the Resonore Stage.
Yes.
That's really wonderful.
Once the bequest is realized, which won't happen until after Mr. Resonore passes away, the funds will be used to buy the music department to bring in guest artists, lecturers, et cetera.
Excellent. So the money will be going to the performing art department then?
Music specifically, yes.
The music department, excellent. So that's great. We want to have a reception with him and the family.
Yeah.
After we can, okay?
Yes.
Yes, 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 yes. Well, we spend a lot of time on those naming rights policies through our board policy subcommittee and at the board level, so it's really great to see this work out for Mr. Resonore or Dr. Resonore, I'm not sure. For him and his family or him to step up. It's really fantastic.
So thank you so much to Masood Resonore and his family. We really appreciate the donation and we'll use it well. It's a nice name for the performing art theater. I like it. It's got a nice ring to it. Are there any other questions about it? Okay, I guess we could have the roll call now.
We need a mover and a second.
Oh, yeah.
I move.
Trustee Inman moves it and trustee J seconded. Trustee Whitredell seconds it.
It was right.
Okay.
Trustee Inman.
Trustee Wright seconded. Sorry. It's hard for me to catch it that fast. Go ahead.
Trustee Inman.
Aye.
Trustee J.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Milchiker.
Aye.
Trustee Pendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Rydell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Monapi.
Aye.
Okay, the next item is 6.8 Board Policy Revision. This is just for review and study. I asked my questions already to the chancellor. Are there any other questions or comments on it?
So moved.
Okay. Trustee Wright makes the motion and trustee J seconds it. Please call the roll.
Trustee Inman.
Aye.
Trustee J.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Milchiker.
Aye.
Trustee Pendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Rydell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Monapi.
Aye.
Okay, and the next item is 6.9 Board Policy Revision. This is for approval. And I also asked all my questions to the chancellor already. I'm in favor of all these. I think the committee probably approved of all these. That's why it's on the agenda. Are there any questions or comments? No, it's okay. Is there someone that would make the motion and second it? Okay, trustee J makes the motion. Is there a second?
Aye.
Trustee Inman, trustee Wright seconds it. Thank you. Trustee J and trustee Wright, can you please call the roll?
Trustee Inman.
Aye.
Trustee J.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Milchiker.
Aye.
Trustee Pendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Rydell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Monapi.
Aye.
Okay, the next item is 6.10 Academic Employing and Classified Administrative Personnel Actions. Are there any changes, Vice Chancellor Viscicil?
There are no changes to this item, thank you.
Okay, so is there a motion and a second?
So moved.
Trustee J makes the motion and I'm trying to see. Trustee Inman seconds it. Now, can you call the roll?
Trustee Inman.
Aye.
Trustee J.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Milchiker.
Aye.
Trustee Pendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Rydell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Monapi.
Aye.
And trustees, item number 611, Classified Personal Items. Vice Chancellor Viscicil, is there any changes on this?
There are no changes to this item, thank you.
No changes, okay. Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Trustee Pendergast makes the motion and trustee J seconds it. Can you please call the roll?
Trustee Inman.
Aye.
Trustee J.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Milchiker.
Aye.
Trustee Pendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Rydell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Monapi.
Aye.
Okay, the next item is, there'll be three of these, well, two of these actually. This is 6.13, The Annual Report on First-Year Probationary Faculty.
We need to do 6.12, President Viscicil.
6.12.
Yeah, you skipped.
Non-bargaining unit.
Yeah, sorry. I didn't have it on. I have two different pages I'm working from and it's not on there. 6.12. Yeah.
There are no changes.
No changes, okay. So is there a motion and a second?
So moved. Second.
J and trustee Wright. Trustee J makes the motion, trustee Wright seconds it. Can you call the roll, please?
Trustee Inman.
Aye.
Trustee J.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Milchiker.
Aye.
Trustee Pendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Rydell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Monapi.
Aye.
Okay, the next item is 6.13 Annual Report on First-Year Probationary Faculty and the names are in the agenda item.
There are no changes to 6.13, but there will be changes to a couple of others.
Okay, great. So is there a motion?
So moved.
So trustee Wright moved it and trustee J seconds it and please call the roll.
Trustee Inman.
Aye.
Trustee J.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Milchiker.
Aye.
Trustee Pendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Rydell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Monapi.
Aye.
Okay, the next item is the annual report on second-year probationary faculty.
So. So, Board President Milchiker, there is a change on this item. When the board votes, they will be voting and I will, I am removing from the list Lindsay Kapp, K-A-P-P, and Jasmine Dieu, D-I-E-U. Those two names are removed from year two.
Okay, so we're removing, we're approving all the others without those two names that you mentioned.
That is correct.
Okay. Did we get a motion? I don't think we did, right?
No.
Trustee Inman made the motion and who seconded it?
Seconded.
And trustee Wright seconded. I keep wanting to say all in favor say aye, but please call the roll.
Trustee Inman.
Aye.
Trustee J.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Milchiker.
Aye.
Trustee Pendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Rydell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Monapi.
Aye.
And the next one is 6.15, 6.15. It's Annual Report on Fourth-Year Probationary Faculty, so these will be recommended for tenure and they'll be getting.
There is one name to be removed from this, so there is one change to 6.15.
Okay.
The name of Alicia Zach, Z-A-C-H, will be removed and the rest will be approved.
Okay, so we are voting on this item with the removal of that one name, but all the other ones, we're granting tenure to. So is there a motion for this?
So moved.
So moved Carolyn Inman? And trustee J seconded, right?
No, the opposite.
Okay, trustee J made the motion and trustee Inman seconded it. Thank you. And can you call the rolls? And these people are getting tenure. That's something to celebrate. Okay, go ahead.
Trustee Inman.
Aye.
Trustee J.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Milchiker.
Aye.
Trustee Pendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Rydell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Monapi.
Aye.
And then 6.16 is Sabbatical Leave Revision. They're just moving the sabbatical to a different time, different semester. Is there a motion on this?
So moved.
So trustee moves and then trustee J seconded. Trustee Rydell seconds it. Can you call the roll, please?
Trustee Inman.
Aye.
Yes, okay. Trustee J.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Milchiker.
Aye.
Trustee Pendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Rydell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Monapi.
Aye.
And then the next one is the CSEA. It's their initial proposal to the district, the California School Employees Association. Is there any? Trustee, Chancellor Viscicil, you don't have anything to say about this, right? It's their proposal.
This is a proposal from CSEA, from CSEA's president, Scott Ferguson-Green. We will open it up next board meeting for public comment.
Okay, they have to be sunshine twice to.
Second.
Okay, so who made the, trustee Pendergast made the motion and trustee Jamal seconded it. Can you call the roll, please?
Trustee Inman.
Aye.
Trustee J.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Milchiker.
Aye.
Trustee Pendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Rydell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Monapi.
Aye.
And 6.18 is the POA, the Police Officers Association Proposal to our District. So is there anything you need to say about that, trustee?
This is the district's proposal to the POA.
Oh, I said that wrong. I apologize. I meant that.
We do expect to have POA's proposal to the district in March, but this is our proposal to POA.
I knew that. I know I said it wrong. Okay. Okay.
Second.
Trustee Jamal made the motion and trustee Wright seconded, so can you call the roll?
Trustee Inman.
Aye.
Trustee J.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Milchiker.
Aye.
Trustee Pendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Rydell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Monapi.
Aye.
And we already did 6.19 because we moved it up to the beginning and the next are just the written reports. 6.1 is the annual report on the third-year probationary faculty because we don't vote on that. The next one is, so you can see there's a CARES Act, there's COVID-19, the chancellor's written report and the two presidents' written report, which are very, full of really interesting information, so I recommend you reading them. And I guess that's that. There's a number of other reports that we don't have to, does anyone, oh, trustee Pendergast has his hand up.
Yeah, going back to 7.2 Staff Response, do we not really have any response to the myriad of comments that we had about the Gaucho logo and how we decided to opt to leave that up to the college? I think that would have been a perfect opportunity to have something filled in there.
I think you want to allow President Stern to speak?
Okay, yeah. What do you think, trustee Pendergast? Would you like President Stern to speak?
I just, I mean, this placeholder in the agenda is so that we have a transparent response to when people make comments to the board, that the staff, that we don't ignore them, that we actually listen and that we communicate back whenever possible.
Good point.
And I think, I mean, we went through three board meetings of.
Three hours.
For us and there's not been anything indicating that we listened and that we responded. That's all.
I appreciate that, trustee Pendergast. If you would like us to respond, we can certainly do that. We could do that for next board meeting. I will assure you, however, that the people who spoke felt very listened to and that we have communicated with them at the college at every step of the way and let them know what was happening in the process, including when the board would be deciding whether to allow the college to make that decision. So I want you to know that they feel heard, but if you feel like we need a formal response, we could certainly do that for the next board meeting.
I appreciate that.
Yeah. Sounds good. I also, speaking about the mascot, are all the students going to be involved in voting, including the emeritus students? Because I think that they all should be involved in making that decision. I think it would be fun for everyone to decide.
They absolutely will be and they'll be involved at multiple stages, but the final vote will include all students and all employees.
Great, okay, thank you. Good. Thank you. Okay, so I think that's the end of the meeting. That was.
Could I say one thing?
Yes, trustee J.
7.3, the Board of Trustees Written Report of Events and Professional Development Activities. I'm the only one that put something in, but that was for all board members and we decided that when we had our board conference.
Yes.
Well, actually, it was a suggestion that I made after the board retreat.
That's right. I don't think we discussed it.
Yeah, it was not something that you discussed. We offered it, I offered it up as a suggestion, but not for you to include your full board report, but to put a list of events that you attended. However, because we're remote, most of our events that we're attending are virtual. So perhaps once we're back to being in person, there will be a list of events that you might want to include in the board agenda.
And trustee J, it's great that you did it. Thank you for doing it.
I mean, you're not the only one because nobody else wanted to do it. It's because I had no report.
And, you know, as the chancellor said, we're going to less things because everything's virtual now. And so there's less opportunities to go to things. There's opportunities to go to things virtually, but not actually to go to things physically. So I'm glad you included the report. That was good. So I think we finished the meeting, right?
Yes, now we have to go back.
And I have to, I have to read something. We will adjourn the meeting and then we will go to closed session